Good evening! Welcome to the stream of "How to value bet vs calling stations?" and the idea came through a video on Pio Order, where the topic was value betting vs calling stations. And then I thought about to show an example how to figure out your value betting ranges on poker choose. And I'm using the poker choose cloud, because I need to practice myself how to use it. I'm very familiar with the old version, but this Pj Cloud has often given me some hard times figuring out why it doesn't work the way I want it to work. I just need to get this board out of my way. So let's see how it goes. I hope everything goes smoothly, but if not, just let me know. So feel free to join the fun. And the idea is that we create a hand where we bet flop turn, and then we're going to bet the river. And how wide can we bet vs certain player? Oh, Bankeu! Bankeu! I don't know how to pronounce that. Welcome to Darkside! And on poker choose, one option is to import hands. It now supports poker tracker. See, it supports a new poker tracker hand, so I could just paste important poker tracker. Had history. Then I'm going to make myself one. It's very easy. And I made it four-handed, so it's not so complicated. And let's say we are playing vs Bigline, so the range is our widest. So set of folds, we are the button. And we raise 3.5. I don't give myself a range now. Oops, sorry. It doesn't go automatically forward. And small play fold, and Bigline decides to call. And if we want Bigline to raise certain hands, like he would treat an aces, then we need to give him that raising range. But we make him call. And then comes the flop. And let's say the flop is queen then six. Ah, king then six. Cards are quite small. Can't you say like that? You can't. I thought they have improved graphics, so you could change the cards. Well, I hope you can see it's very dark and pale. No, you can't. Power. Uh, calling station checks. And we bet for value. Let's say we bet 5 or let's just say 3 quarters. And he decides to call. Then comes the turn. Eight of diamonds. Calling station checks. We bet 3 quarters for value. And he calls, and then let's make the river two of diamonds. And he checks. And now the question is how wide can we bet? And to answer the question, we need to go back and start to define his range, but it's something to think about. And he decides to call. Uh, let's say that when he's a calling station, let's give him 75% range. And on the flop, when we bet, uh, first I'm going to do the hand without capping his range. So he is a classical calling station who can call with even the nuts and slow play the stone call nuts, because then with poker choose, it's easy to give him a raising ranges and see how it affects if his range is capped or not. How it affects our value betting range, because often people forget that even calling stations have strong hands in their range. They are often fixated to the idea that the calling station is weak, so they might value bet too wide. Let's see. So when he goes to flop, then we have here all kinds of different weaknesses to the ranges. So he would definitely call with any flush draw, and then he would call with any straight draw. Where's the eighth wave? There it is. Open end or better. And then he would call with wow, this has issues. Well, it's pair 2 plus means second pair or better. So oh, it's two pairs opener. No, I don't want that. I want one pair 2 plus. Why it's not one pair 2 plus? And now it gives ace king. So that's not what I'm looking for. Hello, freak man! No, that doesn't work. How do I put up the syndax? Because it doesn't work. Alright, middle pair plus. Then chaps, kings, ace, ace. Okay, now it works. So the calling station's calling range on the flop is 10 plus flush draws and straight draws. And the eighth way includes the 7, 8, 9, 2. So all these straight draws with eight or more outs. Any chaps, any queens, any king, any aces, and so on. And should we add a 6 there? Probably yeah. I don't think he's going to fold any 6. Hmm, I'm, oops, sorry. Sorry, sorry. I'm going to put the 6 on its own line in case it somehow misunderstood it. Then on the turn, when we bet and the calling station calls, now he could have the same range as he had before. My range, fuck, did I mess it up? Oh, man. Sorry, it should be here. Copy. Alright. So now they are in the calling range. Thanks for noticing. Would be awful to see that in the end. Yeah. Uh, I love it on the old poker choose where it's more clear whose turn it is. And it takes time. I remember when I started using the previous version of poker choose, in the beginning I was completely lost and it felt so complicated. But once I use it a lot, now it's very natural. To use it now with poker choose, it's the same thing. I'm quite lost and it's confusing, but I'm quite sure that the more I use it, the more familiar I become with it and the easier it would be. So now his calling range on the turn, would it be the same? Uh, flush draw, all the open enders that open up on the turn, for sure. Uh... I don't think he's going to call with middle pair, and he's not going to call with 6. So now, on the turn, his made hands are top pair or better. So we drop some random tens and chaps and queens. But any flush draw, any straight draw, top pair or better for sure. And then comes the river. He checks. And now the question is how wide can we bet? And the underlying concept is that we need to beat over 50% of his calling range. If we bet with a range that has 49% equity vs his continuation range, then it's minus EV for us. So if we bet 100, and we will win. Uh... I mean, if we bet 50, we can 49 back. So we need to define ourselves a hand. Uh, no, I didn't give him a raising range. The first version is when he's uncapped, he doesn't raise. And then we can add raising range and see the difference. And that's the power of poker choose. What if we can change his range? We can change his accents, see how it affects. And that's the best thing in poker choose in my mind, because then you can see how it affects. You can see that, okay, if he's uncapped, so he can check call with set of kings on the flop on the turn. Or he could just call with 7, 9 on the turn. Then you can see how it affects the value betting range. And then if he is raising strong hands, you see how it affects. Is there a huge difference or not? And that helps you to understand certain thresholds, how things affect each other. We can change his preflop range to 100 to 50. See, does that have any effect? And so on. So you will see what affects your ranges and what kind of stuff doesn't. And it's very easy, because if you do work with solver, you get that one thing. And if you change anything, you have to do all the things again. But here it is. So we start with uncapped range. And how you can do it is now give yourself a hand, and then you see how much you have equity vs his calling range. So we need to figure out his calling range first. And why are we betting half a pot? Hmm... Of course, our bet sizing affects his calling range. If we put his calling range, it's different than if we bet $1 or 1BP. So like on this board, where his calling range is wide, it's not polarized. His range and his calling range is not really top heavy. Then his calling range is very wide. He has strong hands, medium strength hand. He might have weak hands if he bets small enough. So if we bet half a pot, his calling range is different than if we bet full pot. So now we can also see how much does that affect based on our assumptions. But then in the end, it's good to remember that this is just hypothetical assumption. In real life, the calling station doesn't know his range is even himself. But let's say it's bet quarter. And now if we bet 3/3, what is his continuation range? Um, we don't need to define raising range and calling range, because let's assume we are making team value, but if he raises, we fold. So we lose the same amount. So all we need to do is give him a calling range. And if we bet 3 quarters, what would be his calling range? And I don't know, does actually king A plus, okay, doesn't work. So how do you figure out king A? Where's the two pairs? Two pair 1, so is two pair 2, king A, or better? Wow, I'm getting epilepsy here. Oh dear. Why this is so I can see it there, so yeah. But it's king A, king then sets straight. Out of all this blinking weirdness. Oh, he's not that dark, because then we can't really value bet anything. Uh, let's make it a bit wider. Uh, let's say king then king A, two pair, 10, 8, or better. Yeah. Uh, if I here, doesn't matter, because I can, because it's oh, now it stopped. Okay, it's just needed a force. Now it stopped. Just have to punch him a little. So now it's that wide. So now the question is how wide can we bet? And does our blocker affect that thing? Might be a simple question, might be not. And if you estimate that he's going to call here with 10, 8, or better, if we bet uh, let's say we bet half a pot, so he might actually call with 10, 8. Oh no, now we lost this. Oh, it doesn't save it. Okay. Alright, alright, alright. Where's the two pair? Now it stopped. Uh, no raising range, because it doesn't matter if he raises, we fold. So I make my life easier. We lose the same amount, so we only, we just have to give him a calling range. It includes his raising range, but we're losing the same amount whether he calls or raises, because we are not calling his range when we have weaker range. But now the question is, we know he's going to call with 10, 8, or better on the river. So how wide can we value bet? And we can give ourselves exact hand. And of course hmm... What if we have king deuce? We have only 17% equity vs his range when we have better two pairs. But wouldn't eliminating raising range affect our check back range? What? We're not checking, we're betting. Now I don't understand. There's no checking back. We bet flop, we bet turn, and we bet river in position. And we are not checking back. I'm betting because I know he's not raising. Well, I'm checking back everything else, then I'm value betting, and we're trying to figure out where's the threshold, how wide can we value bet vs these assumptions. And we have ourselves, we have exact hand. We don't need ranges. We know exactly what we did in the hand. So king deuce is not value bet, not even close. So what about king ten? 44, and that's surprising. I would think king ten might be even a value bet here when he is uncapped. So you can see that if he's a tricky player who could just check call with 7, 9 on the turn, then we can value bet king ten on the river. And that's a bit surprising. I'm quite sure if we remove 7, 9 from his range on the turn, then we can value bet king ten. But versus totally uncapped calling station, and I've seen people checking set and nuts three times to you out of position. So versus those players, actually your river value betting range, it's really thin. So we cannot value bet any two pairs, even when his calling range is 10, 8, or better. Yeah. Versus his total range, we have 78%, but once we remove all the missed draws there, we have only 44%. So pretty much versus uncapped range, it seems that we can only value bet, even set of duces is not the value bet. What the fuck? Set of tens. Wow! So versus uncapped range, it's set of eights that we can value bet on the river. And that's, I have to say, that's surprising. Uh, let's give ourselves a king ten, and then let's block the straight. Okay, now we can value bet king ten. Put a set with nine nines. Dude, there's no set with nines. Or set with a nine, yeah, definitely goes on. Like king ten with pair of nines can be value betted. And the difference is that in the previous hand, we had king, queen, queen, which blocks the straight draw. So now we can see how the side cards affect as a blocker to some portions of his range, which is really important. I, king, queen, queen then is not even close of value betting. King 9, 9, 10 is a value bet. So there are king tens, and then there are king tens. And when we have the queens, the reason is we are blocking his straight draws, which means that he has more value hands in his range, because we are blocking some of his air on the river. Now we are not blocking straight draws, so he has slightly more straight draws in his range. But with nines, we are blocking the 9, 7 a lot. So it sounds like that he has 9, 7. We are unblocking his air. We are blocking his better made hands. So with king then 9, 9, now suddenly it becomes a value bet. And we cannot have king then 9, 9 with spades, which sucks. Yeah, same with queens. So are bluffing a lot. Who's bluffing a lot? Seromania, you're making me confused. Who's bluffing a lot? No, we are not. It's calling stations. We're not bluffing. We are definitely not bluffing. We are value betting. And the thing is this is our equity vs his calling range. And as long as this number is above 50%, we can value bet. So we're not value betting and we're not bluffing. We are value betting. With these assumptions, in this scenario, king then 9, 9 can be value betted. Hello, Bit7. Yeah, two cards is not enough. That's why we have loads of them. Thanks for joining the order! Woo! There should be some kind of media thing, but I'm not sure. Um... So we're value betting. That's the thing. How thin can we value bet? As long as we have over 50% equity vs his calling or continuation range, we can value bet. And king then, well, king then with two nines is 51%. So I'm quite sure that with one nine, it's below 50. Yeah, 47. Shouldn't value bet with these assumptions, but let's give him raising ranges along the way. So he is not capped. So we'll go to the flop. And now let's say he would raise king, king. And if we raise, uh, let's just fold, so we close the decision tree. Then on the turn, let's say he would raise 7, 9, for sure. Why wouldn't he? And if he does, let's close the king tree. So now he is capped. I'm watching this hand discussion, and I'm going to that I don't want this stream enough. Uh, if I understand right, then don't watch. So now we have capped his range, and now you can see the difference. Oh, it's still only 47. That's super weird. Let's see if this changes. We have 51. Oh, the equity doesn't change. How come? Now something is wrong. Okay, uh, something is wrong, because our equity doesn't change when we change his range. Uh, do I need to put this on the top? Oh yeah, so it would do this one first. Okay. put this on the top? Oh yeah, so it would do this one first, okay. Someday I am very familiar with poker choose cloud. So I think we need to put the raising range first. So then it excludes it from the calling range. It, it's funny. Why, why it doesn't, and now it did. Now it came, so now our river equity versus his calling range should be more than fifty-one. Okay, so now it works, it's sixty-six. It's, it's funny, every time when I do a poker choose cloud stream, half of the stream goes where, where I tried to figure out, why did I mess up? The nation. But yeah, it, it's fun that I do it, so you don't have to do it. So you can just do it the right way, but yeah. The problem was that the calling range was on the top and raising range was on the bottom. It should be otherwise, so that stronger range should be on the top, and when it doesn't raise, it excludes that range from the bottom. It, it works differently than in, in old version where you had different boxes. It doesn't matter. Uh, we thought that they were in, now it matters. So now we can see that if his range is capped, the value bet is, is way more easier. And naked, let's make complete naked, king, king. King then three-three without any kind of blockers, with one spade, i- it's clear value bet. So now, now it looks like more of the real life scenario versus coin station. If his range is capped, he doesn't have kings, he doesn't have seven-nine, and he calls with king eight or better on the river. Uh, ten-eight or better on the river. So, so now we can value bet really wide. Well, king deuce is, is, is not quite. King six without any meaningful blockers. Not close. King eight is borderline, so with king eight, we need blockers to his made hand range, which would be how can we have any kind of blockers here? We can't. We, we could have a blocker to six, remove some of the bottom sets, no, not enough. And with graph workout, I'll always value bet. Hmm, there's no graph option. There's no graph option here. And, and the lowest equity is fifty-one, that, that's easy for value betting. Because every time when you value bet, you have to have more than fifty percent equity, the sizing doesn't matter. Uh, the sizing doesn't matter to the required equity for value betting. It, it's important to understand that when we value bet, we need to have more than fifty percent. Because if we have less, no matter what amount we put to the pot, the return is less than that one. If we have exactly fifty percent, we get exactly what we invested on the river. So, so we need that fifty-one. And then we just have to manually see what kind of hands give us over fifty percent. And here, it's pretty safe assumption that we can value bet king ten or better. Unless his calling range becomes tighter. And so, um. Uh, we have king then nine-nine. And we can see that now why this is only thirty-two? Why our expected stack is so low? I don't get it. Why is this our expected stack null? There it is, hundred fifteen. But how can? I mean, here we can see that before the call, his stack is seventy-six point eight. And after he calls with thirty-four percent equity, his stack goes to eighty-five. Ah, why is that? It doesn't make sense. No, we're not bluffing. Don't, don't bluff calling stations, and we, we're talking about value betting today. And I want to figure out why his stack goes up. Oh yeah, there's portion of money there. So yeah, it, it should grow up a little. Yeah, well, he needs twenty-five crores, so yeah, it goes up. Alright, so now we know the EV that, I, I need to probably write this down. So I remember. So the EV is hundred fifteen when we bet half of pot. Versus player whose preflop range is seventy-five percent. So let's see what happens if he is not that wide preflops. Or he's wider. So oops, have to put this one here. Damn, let's see again, because now we had aces in his range. And I'm going to fold to that tree bet, so we close the decision tree. I had his preflop, prebetting range in, in the wrong order. Well, still hundred fifteen, alright? So what if we say that his preflop range is wider? Do you think it affects our EV in any way if we change it from seventy-five to ninety-five? In the previous example, the EV in the end was that our expected stack is hundred fifteen. If we give twenty percent garbage hands, doesn't matter. And I think it doesn't matter, but let's see. Let it calculate a little. EV goes up one BB. Alright, let's make it tighter, let's make him a normal normal type of player who calls only fifteen, fifty percent. So from ninety-five to fifty, now his preflop range is cut in half. Does it affect the value of the value bet on the river? Does it go up or down? Easy questions. Do we have more value or less? And it's actually interesting, because now he probably has more or doesn't probably have, my, my estimation is it doesn't matter. Because very often, when the range goes over thirty, thirty-five percent, it doesn't matter whether it's thirty-five or ninety-five. But let's see. And it calculates, so it's going to be right. Hundred eighteen. So it goes even up, and that's the weird part. When his range preflop was seventy-five percent, our, our EV of the hand was, or the expected stack size with the line was hundred fifteen. We, we, you can see here. But now, when we change his range to fifty percent, so we took away one-third of his bottom range, give him a slightly stronger range preflop, actually the value goes up, because now he has more of king eight, ten-eight type of hands. And now, if we go back and remove even the set of tens from his range on the flop, then probably our EV goes up even more. Couldn't even OMFG. Uh, I thought about playing today, but I, I watched the football last night and then I slept really badly and I have to wake up early. So I was really tired on the afternoon, I took a nap. And now I had this one hour, one and a half hours to streams, I decided not to play, but to show this, how you can figure out the value betting. And the thing is, when we remove king tens and nine-seven from his range, our king then is just rushing him. And now the value goes to hundred twenty-two. Alright, let's give him back that seventy-five percent range. And let's start to see how wide can we value bet now when he is capped. So now the question is, his preflop range is seventy-five percent and he would prebet aces. On the flop, he would raise set of kings, he would raise set of tens. On the turn, he would raise seven-nine, the straight, so his range is capped to set of sixties or set of eights and lower. So then the question is, how wide can we value bet? On king then six-eight deuce. And if he was not capped, the threshold was king then with blockers to the straight. But now, when he is capped, which is the reality very often, the question is, how wide can we value bet? And we need to have over fifty percent equity. So let's go back and see. Let's put the nines there as blockers and give ourselves a deuce. Now the nine blockers don't matter, because he cannot have nine-seventy range. But can we value bet king deuce when his river calling range is ten-eight or better? Because the, all the draws from the flop, the straight draw and flush draw misses, he might call a bit wider. So we have king nine-nine deuce, top and bottom two pairs. We know that when we bet half a pot or we estimate, opponent is going to call us with ten-eight or better. Can we value bet king deuce? We have seventy-eight percent equity versus his total range. But is it enough to value bet? How, how many of you would value bet this? How many of you wouldn't? Or no, no one dares to answer? And I'm not sure. Most likely I don't think, well, I don't think it's too thin. I mean, ten-eight. Ten-eight, I don't think it's, because we are blocking all the worse hands. And king deuce, I'm not sure, because the only hand that calls us is ten-eight. So I don't think we can value bet king deuce here. If his calling range is ten-eight opener, his calling range has to be wider. Yeah, we have only twenty-eight percent. Only twenty-eight percent. Uh, king eight probably is yeah, he only calls with ten-eight opener on this simulation. King eight is fifty-two. So that's, that's as thin as it gets. So now, now we come to the strategical theory that with king eight, we probably should bet with slightly smaller sizing to make sure he's going to call with worse hands. And the stronger our hand is, the bigger sizing we can use, and versus coin stations, y- you can have this uh, value betting sizing that is based on your hand strength slightly. So if we have king then, we can bet slightly more than half a pot. And if we have king eight, we can call slightly lower to make sure we beat his calling range with over fifty percent equity. Because coin station doesn't adjust and he's never exploding to, but yeah, king eight is very thin. And now the thing is, let's see what happens if we give ourselves some spade blockers. Oh, doesn't actually matter, it's weird. Well, doesn't matter enough. But actually, if we have king 10 8, what happens? Oh yeah. You're crossing king 6 and king duse. Well, king 8, 6, duse is still a value bet. Yep, he also has set of 6s, 8s, and even set of duses in his range, not the pick portion, but he has them. So this is how you can figure out how thin you can value bet coin stations. And I think it's definitely worth of your time if you play small states where you will have these coin stations. Like here in position, if we had king 10. Well, the river is so black that king 10 is obvious to bet here. But let's change. Let's make our life miserable. Let's make it two of spades. And he checks. And now he's going to call us with spades too. So now the question is, how wide can we value bet when the spade gets there? Yeah, of course, if his calling range is ace, king plus, then we can bet wider. And the thing is that there's a huge difference in coin stations' calling ranges. But we have to make some kind of estimations and then base our actions to those estimations. And then if we think that, okay, not sure if this was the right way, then we just have to check it later. And if we cannot trust our estimations, then it's going to be a problem in poker. Then we should play sort of our standard strategy. So what would be the standard strategy versus unknown player? You just give him the average stats of player in the player pool and see what's the value betting range versus unknown player. And then if we know that he is like a coin station, we can give him slightly wider. And then see if the value bet is too thin or not. But I often do, if I play a session and I'm in this kind of spot where I'm not sure, should I value bet this hand versus this player or not? Whether he's tight player, loose player, whatever. Then I'm often marking the hand and checking it in the poker choose. And so far I've done it in the old version because you could import the hands from poker tracker. You can do it now on the poker choose cloud too. It's a new feature. But in the old version, it's very quick to check out value betting, is it plus EV or minus EV? So that's what I'm done often if on the game I'm not sure. And very often in those situations where I'm not sure, it's very break even with that exact hand. It's very close to the threshold. So if the hand was stronger, it would be easy value bet. If it was weaker, it would be easy check. But you can check it out because very large portion of our profits on smaller states comes from these high VPIB passive players. And now on the river, if we have a spot where betting would be plus 10 BBs in value and we don't do it, it's kind of then be like a mistake, which is huge for our win rate. So you cannot skip those spots. If you can make good value bets here, it's going to be very profitable for your win rate. With spade on the river, I would calculate some 40 equity. Well, the thing is we are not bluffing. We could also see that should we bluff with a spade blocker? Would that be profitable? And it's definitely worth of figuring out. But today we are not talking about bluffing. I have 10 to 15 minutes, so we don't open that kind of worms. But with the same way versus tight players, we can see what should we barrel on the river? So versus coin stations, we are not bluffing now today. Sorry. So what is his calling range now when the spade gets here? Is it still 10 8 or better? I would probably change it. If we bet half a pot, I'm going to change it to the king 8 or better. Stop, 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 stop. There it is. Well, I changed my mind. I will make it king 6 or better. Because if he has king 6 on the flop, he might be mentally attached to that hand and bluff catches the river. No reason to give him. He would call two pairs with blockers. His VPIB is 75 coin station. He doesn't know what blocker is. So if we know that now on the river, he's calling with king 6 or better, then what is our value betting range? We have to have some. The question is, do we bet all flashes? Let's have ace queen. For some reason, we have ace queen 4 3. Don't ask me how, but for some reason, we end up being on the river versus coin station with the smallest possible flush. The question is, do we value bet for high flush if his calling range is king 6 or better? The answer is no. And if we don't value bet the flush, then we are definitely not value betting any sets or king 10s. So most likely the threshold here is some kind of 8 high flush. Yeah, that's 57. But if we put the lower flashes, then I don't think it's going to be profitable. Seven high flush on the threshold. So 8 high flush or better? Depending, like if we have 9 8, 8 7, not sure if that would be. If we block the seven high, oh it is. Okay. So it's pretty much 8 high flush when his range is super wide. 9 7 is not, I'm very sure. The 9 7 is not unless we have the flush blockers. Yeah, 9 7 is only 37%. So even with spade blockers. Yeah, if we have two spade blockers, we have a pretty strong hand. I was surprised that we had 100% with nuts. So yeah, with 7 9, even with flush blocker, it's not a value bet. And sometimes people actually value bet the straight here, thinking that his range is so wide. And in a sense, what's often causes the error is like if they put this hand on the equity calculator or here, check what's my equity versus his range? When we come to the river, our equity is 68%. So people think that, okay, I'm 70, 30 favorite versus his range. I can definitely value bet. But that's a mistake. Because he's going to fold the bottom of his range versus his air, we don't achieve anything by betting. So here, when we bet with 9 7, he's only going to call with range that beats us. Because versus his calling range, we have only 42%. So we cannot value bet 9 7 even when we are ahead of his range before we bet. But once he calls, we are no longer ahead of his range. And that's often where people go wrong. They, like betting 9 7 here is too thin of a value bet when the flush completes. No matter we are huge favorite versus his whole range. So what causes, or what's the outcome of this is sometimes in PLO, you have second nuts and you cannot value bet, you have to check back. Because the only hand that calls you is the nuts. And I've been there a few times and it sounds so weird that we have the second nuts and we cannot value bet. But you can have those kind of situations. Yeah, on the straight, we can't value on the dern. And then just on the river, it's like if he shows you that he has two spades, you would never value bet. Like on the live game, he shows you, I have the flush. You wouldn't value bet. It's the same here. He has the flush too often. Oh, well, it's interesting if he bets the river. It's whole another story. Versus coin station, I would fold. So it's way different story. Now we are just isolating two straight value bets on the river in position versus coin station. But my advice is, if you have a tracker or even if you don't, when you have a situation on the river versus common players or even regulars or tight players or aggressive players, whatever player he is, and you are not sure, should I value bet this hand? You're thinking that it might be good, I'm not sure. Then when you are not sure what to do, if you have any doubts or you need to think it for a long time, it means that your decision making and thinking process in that situation can be improved a lot. Because if the decision is easy, then your thinking process is good, your decision making is good, most likely. But if it's hard to figure out what to do, then there's a lot of things, a lot of information that you haven't processed. You don't know how to make the decision. And then my advice is mark the hand or if you play on side where there's no hot or you cannot import the hands, take a screenshot of the hand. On TT poker party, you can get the hand later to poker tracker. So take a screenshot so you can find the hand later. Or if you play on side where there's no hand histories, just take a screenshot of the hand. And then after the session, create it, poker choose. You can create it in one or two minutes here. Or if it's in your tracker, you can just import the hand. Then check the hand, give the opponent's ranges and see if your value bet is plus EV or not. It's that easy. And then if the EV is very close, then you know that, okay, that's why the decision was so hard. Because it's very close to threshold. That's where the hard decisions are. But if the EV is clearly positive or clearly negative, then for some reason you thought the situation is closer than it was. So you might want to study that situation. And Shadow Maniac, does it show the EV of checking and betting? Yeah? I mean, we could also check here. So now we can see that when we, with this hand, if we check, our expected stack is 108. And if we bet, and that is his calling range, our EV is 106. So checking ace queen 9 7, the EV is two big lines more if we check. Check back. Because when we bet and we have less than 50% equity, it's not profitable compared to checking. It's good rule of thumb that in order to value bet, you need at least 50% equity. Because then you get half of the money back that was put there on the river, which is break even. And if your equity is less, then any amount of money you put on the river, you can less back. Something much weaker. It's there for the blocker. Well, doesn't really, doesn't really change much. Sorry, equity doesn't drop, but let's say we have let's say we have a set of 6s. Why it doesn't calculate? Why? I don't know why it, for some reason, now it doesn't calculate the There it is. So just the king with spade. So alright, ace king with one spade. The thing is that still yeah, I'm only 23% equity versus his range, so we are in a bad shape here. Yeah? Betting is 85, checking is 87. But why betting now? There's something wrong. Because betting should be 53. There's something really wrong here. That expected stack is wrong. And I don't know why. Because here we can see that once we bet, we have 0% equity versus his calling range. Oh yeah, he's folding some, that's why. Yeah, we're still winning 23% of times. Okay, that's why. So it's wrong. It's right. It's right. I was wrong. Yeah, when our equity versus his calling range goes over 50%, then the EV of bet becomes better than checking. Which is just no brainer. That's how it should grow. Because then any amount of money goes to the river, we get the majority of it back because we have over 50% equity. And if we have less, then we can less back what we invested. Alright, I hope you enjoyed. And the idea was to show how you can explore the value betting range. You can do this with bluffing range. And the idea was to show how you can explore the value betting range. You can do this with bluffing range. Uh, you can do this like on the river versus rec, we can see, okay, what kind of hands we want to bluff, what kind of hands we want to value bet. You can give yourself uh the opponent different ranges. If he calls a bit wider on the flop, how it affects that river. And and the poker choose is the number one tool to learn how to exploit opponents. Then solver is number one tool, how to be balanced and defend yourself versus opponents. And you need both, in my opinion. Especially the lower stakes you play, because the more you make money by just exploiting. But it doesn't matter, even if you go up to PLO hundred, PLO two hundred. Still, a lot of the money you make is by exploiting opponents. That's where the profit comes from. Because if everyone plays solid solver strategy, no one wins. So w- we could use the exact same format by figuring out, should we bluff the river, even versus coin station? Not sure if we should, but we could see if it's profitable. But it's it's not. Hmm. Actually, let's take away that king. So we have zero equity. Because he's going to fold half of his range. But why this doesn't change? Oh, now they do change, okay. So actually, with ace queen check nine, the EV of a bet is better than checking, because we have no showdown equity and we can make him fold better hands a lot. So now we can see that actually we should bluff versus coin stations some some amount of times. So if we end up here on the river versus coin stations, then we should bet. So with the same way, we can figure out what kind of things dictate the bluffing on the river, what kind of blockers we need to have and so on. So y- yeah, we do, we do bluff versus coin stations. And I I could easily see the hand code this way. We bet the flop because we have the rap. Not sure if we should, but if we decide, then then we have the blocker with the nine and we had a huge rap. We definitely bet. And then in the river, we have a situation that no showdown value. And we win the pot by bluffing. So sometimes we we end up there, bluffing the river. Or we have the flush draw and river is two of diamonds. And should should we then bluff during the ace high into a bluff or not? Yeah, I I said that today we are not bluffing, because we were exploring uh value betting range. But yeah, we definitely bluff coin stations. Actually, we do bet certain flops with really high frequency. But uh as a rule of thumb, I would say that versus coin stations, our bluffs are either one or three streets. Like if we have flop is, let's say the flop is ten eight si- six and we have nine, we could go for three streets. And the value comes on the river when he finally fold. But if we bluff versus coin stations, flops and turns and keep up rivers, that's a bad strategy probably. But yeah, we do bluff coin stations too. And sometimes we end up in a situation where we have to bluff the river to win. But if you're constantly on situation versus high VPIB players, where you need to bluff the rivers to win the pot, then probably that strategy is not the best one overall. Because still, the money doesn't come from bluffing coin stations. The money comes from value betting. And if we are constantly in a spot where we have to pull up big triple barrel bluff versus coin stations, it might not be the best strategy overall. But sometimes we end up being on the river with a bluff hand like here and we can see that in this scenario, it would be better to bet than check. And so much things you can do with poker choose and just learn how to exploit opponents. And when you play with this, change things a little here and there, different ranges, different sizings and so on, you you will start to see some thresholds and things that affect each other. And then you can make lot better estimations on the table. And that's why I I think poker choose is probably more valuable than solver for anyone who's playing below PLO fifty. As a rough kind, and of course, it's not that black and white, but I I like the software and the possibilities you can do with it. Really helps you to improve your poker thinking. I hope you enjoyed one hour fifteen minutes. That that's quite a lot to figure out, should we value bet king ten or not versus coin station? All right, um, I hope that tomorrow we are back on normal streaming schedule with some playing. Got some racing to do to get those damn bonuses. But hope you enjoyed. That's for everyone for followings, subs and everything. We are only two hundred sixty six away from mega party, whatever that that's going to be. But uh stay tuned. I I will try to stop slacking and update the website and stream schedules and everything. And let's start grinding for twenty twenty one. And I hope to see you tomorrow. Bye bye.